Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum, School Board Candidates Forum. I am Ann Smith, a member of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County, and I will be moderating today's forum. On behalf of the League, let me welcome each of you and ask that you enjoy this morning as we gather information about the individuals who have graciously agreed to run for office and be with us today. Before we begin, please turn off cell phones so they don't ring at an inappropriate moment. We will be videotaping today's forum, and you will be able to access and you will be able to access the tape by going to our website, which is L W V V C dot org. And it will be down at the bottom of the main page where you'll see the YouTube logo. If you just click on it, you'll be able to get it. Feel free to direct your friends and your family to our website in order to view today's Candidates Forum. I want to make something extremely clear today, and that is that the views expressed by the candidates are, have nothing to do with the League of Women Voters of Volusia County. Our goal is to provide an avenue where citizens can gather together and ask questions to help them make an informed decision at the polls. We are doing this as a public service. Let me, let me remind everyone that we are all neighbors here, and many of us are friends. Our combined goal is to do what is best for the children of Volusia County. Having said that, if you have a question that you would like to ask, then remember, if you raise your hand, Pat Drago will bring a card to you and pencil if you don't have one, and then we will do our best to ask your question. All four candidates will answer the same question, so phrase your questions accordingly. And I say that because we do have an incumbent who is running for reelection. And sometimes incumbents vote on things that we don't like the way they vote, so we want to say to them, why did you vote that way? Well, that's not appropriate for the other three candidates. So your question must be appropriate for everyone to answer. The candidates will have no opening statement, and they will have a two-minute closing comment. I have already determined the order in which they will be speaking. We will have questions the League has prepared, as well as the questions you all have submitted. And these, your questions will be screened for duplication, relevance, and balance by the three members of the League who are sitting at this table, Judy Conti, Pat Cosby, and Cass Halliday. Candidates will have up to one minute to answer each question, and I will alternate the order of who responds first. And I'm also going to do it by district, so that if, if you're in District One, then you can hear what the two candidates who are running in District One and how they answer the question for that district, and then I'll go to District Three. At the end of a minute, the timer, Sue Hoffstrand, raise your hand, Sue, will hold up the stop sign, and we ask that you finish your thought and very quickly complete your answer. So candidates, make sure you see Sue. One final word to the candidates. Our timer will hold up actually a yellow sign when you have thirty seconds. And that thirty seconds is a long time. So please pay attention to that, and then when the stop sign goes up, we're going to ask that you stop. In fairness to each other, you don't want to go beyond the time limit. Are there any questions from the candidates? All right, then let's go. You're going to have to pass this mic. All right. And by the drawing that we did earlier, we know that Ms. Haynes, who is the incumbent, will be answering first, and then Mr. Bowie, and then I'll switch it up on the second question. So in District One, we have Mr. Al Bowie, a former member of the Volusia County School Board, and then we have Ms. Jamie, I mean, not School Board, School District, and then Ms. Jamie Haynes, who also has been in the district and is an incumbent. In District Three, we have Justin Kennedy, and we have Kim Short. So those are your four candidates you will be hearing from this morning. All right. Question number one, Ms. Haynes. Teacher and other staffing shortages are a pervasive problem throughout Florida. Given the limited resources, what are two or three suggestions, specific suggestions, you have for the recruitment and retention of staff?
So actually, it's across the nation. What we've done is, we already have a recruitment and retention department located within the HR department in Volusia County Schools. Since January of 2022 this year, they've already held thirty-one job fairs. They are also advertising at all of the colleges, they're advertising at the career source sites in order to bring people in. We even this month had two more job fairs being held. We're not only holding job fairs for teachers, we're also holding them for staff. We are looking into the J-1 visa program and looking at bringing in individuals specifically in areas of math and science, which are shortages, that can come in and teach here in the United States. We have other districts doing that. We're also looking at partnering with a health source piece to look to bring in our career professionals and our nurses. And so there are a lot of things going on, and we're advertising. Thank you.
Mr. Bowie?
Thank you. In my role as Director of Teacher Recruitment and Retention for twelve years at Volusia County Schools, we had an aggressive program going forward to hire teachers and support staff. Everything from job fairs, which were very effective, we advertised, we were aggressively advertising. We also had recruiters who would travel to invite teachers and non-instructional staff to the district. And we have an incentive program where we offered signing bonuses. So if you are not really aggressive with this effort, you will find yourself trying to open the school district minus two or three hundred teachers that are needed. We can't afford that. We have to, if we're serious about recruiting teachers and recruiting staff members, we have to show that, and it has to be shown in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Short, you answer first.
Sure. One of the ideas that I actually gave a previous superintendent was that we need to have an exit interview process that we do to fidelity. Unless we have actual data to find out why people are leaving, it's going to be very hard to fix this problem. They, right now, I know that, you know, our teachers' union did a survey, and one of the big things that came out was behavior, and, and that was the reason why people were leaving the district. So we definitely need to try to address that problem. I also think that by doing the exit interview process, we're probably going to find a way to retain about ten to fifteen percent of our, of our teachers or of our staff just by having those conversations with them before they walk out the door. Because a lot of times, it's a simple fix. Somebody's, you know, maybe living in Port Orange and working in Deltona, and we can make changes so we can address those things immediately and be able to retain some of our staff that way. Yeah, I was going to go on, but I just got my red.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay. In business, the way you succeed is getting new customers or saving the ones that you got. And if you're having a hard time getting new customers, you have to look inward, and how can we capitalize on the customers that we have? And that brings me to my statement, that we have to focus within the existing teacher base because we can't afford to lose any of them. And although we have retention and recruitment, there's, there's a sense of mistrust, and so the, so the retention department, I don't think is getting the message from within. So I think the retention department needs to somehow figure out a way where they can get honest answers and productive input from teachers who are considering leaving, catch them before they leave. And then second, just an idea I had outside the box, you know, the governor has put forth a plan to offer to military personnel. Why not put that plan, why not make that offer to students that are in the Education Department at colleges? They have to do an internship anyway to get their certificate. So why not make that internship paid and incentivize them?
Thank you. All right, second question. And we are going to be, I'm going to jump to District Three. So, Mr. Kennedy, you will answer first. As people become more involved in the details of curriculum and material choices, how would you handle competing parental and educational issues?
Well, I think we're all parents, I assume most of us are. And so parents want to be involved as much as they can. But they also have competing things in life, work, other responsibilities, family, travel, et cetera. So I think they have to put their trust in the educational system. And I personally trust the teachers that have, my, all five of my kids have gone through. So I wouldn't say it's a competing interest. I think we need to turn it into a collaboration. And I think parents need to have full access, but at the same time, the professionals also need to have some autonomy in terms of what their training and their, and their background is. Let's not forget, teachers are parents too. So they have the same perspective that we all do with our kids. And so working together, as opposed to making it a competing interest, I think working together and making it a collaborative effort makes better for you.
All right, Ms. Short?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Kennedy on this one. I mean, collaborating is the only way to go. We need to have more transparency so that we can bring our families back into our school district. Right now, our volunteer numbers at the school district are half of what they were pre-COVID, and I think there is a lot of distrust out there to, to just write off parents' concerns, people who actually have their children in our school system, and, and say that they shouldn't have a place or a voice in what it is that their children are being taught is definitely not the way to go. You know, sometimes it's harder, it definitely is harder, to do things in a collaborative way, but that doesn't mean it's not better. That just means that it takes more work. And having more buy-in from families to what it is that's going on, we should always want that. We have too many parents right now who aren't engaged in what's going on with their children in their schools. So why would we ever not want that? That doesn't really make any sense to me. So I think, I think working together is the only way, and it's something that we should all be on board with, and that's better for our kids.
All right, Mr. Bowie, you will be the next one to answer this question.
Stating communication and cooperation between the School Board and our parents is part of my platform. When I was a principal in a middle school and, and an elementary school, if I didn't see parents in my school volunteering when I walked out in the media center, out in special area, or somewhere on that campus, I got concerned. My whole effort was to invite parents into the school to become a part and see what we were doing and help us do what was right for kids. That's going to be my same attitude as a School Board member. I think we need to have a parent advisory group so that we can air parent concerns and they can share them with the School Board at the appropriate time. We must invite our parents and be a part of the decision-making process, what we are deciding to offer to our children. And, and, and that same attitude needs to be a part of our efforts to make sure our school district move, and, and first of all, our direction needs to be moving our school district from a B to an A. And we can't do that without our parents, and that's a part of the overall mix. So I'm...
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
We actually have an excellent process that from start to finish in selecting curriculum and materials at our schools. It involves our district curriculum specialists, it involves our teachers that have taught those subjects, that know what needs to be presented. We also adopt our textbooks from the state-approved list, but there is a component of that that is lacking. Every year, when we have a new textbook up for adoption or curriculum resources and materials, we have an opportunity for the public and for parents to come and give input. That's where we're falling down, because they're not coming. Only a handful come out, and then when they get upset about something, you have to say, well, why weren't you there, and why didn't you come, come and give input? We had to push out the SEL videos last year. There were some issues with some of those, but you know what we did? We set up a committee where parents also came in and worked with the curriculum specialist to view those materials. We have to build bridges with parents in order to, for children to succeed.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to start with District One, and we will start with Mr. Bowie answering first. A very complicated system. Pine Ridge High School had a rough year of discipline issues. I understand there is a new principal this year. What steps can the School Board take to make sure my high school student is in a safe learning environment? And I think you could probably just say that district-wide, but this is a particular Pine Ridge High School.
Okay, I think, first of all, if there is a particular school that's having a disciplinary issue and there are some concerns about what's happening, first of all, we have to make sure that we evaluate what's going on in that school to address the problem. It could be a number of things, but we must make sure that we, with the principal and his staff, evaluate the entire disciplinary process, make sure it's in line with what the School Board policy would require, and make sure it's being followed through at the school. I think one thing that we have to do to retain teachers is support them in classroom activities and what's happening at schools. That means administration has to give teachers that support and confidence that what they do in their classroom will be supported relative to student behavior. And you just can't take a swipe at it and think that it's going to go away. It's not. If there are issues relative to discipline, if there are issues relative to safety, they must be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
So yes, Pine Ridge is starting off with a brand-new principal this year, a principal that actually applied and wanted to go there. He has a military background, and he brings a lot of exciting ideas. So number one, it takes the leadership, being on board and stating that we're going to stand up, and when a student steps out of line, there's going to be consequences. We just recently voted on our student code of conduct, and my statement was, it needs to be followed. But in addition to that, we've added additional school counselors on campus, and we've added a mental health individual on our high school campuses to also address those issues that are happening. But the truth is, we need parents. We need parents to step up and parent their children, set the expectations, and follow through when their child is not following what needs to be done. I'm looking forward to this year at Pine Ridge. I personally taught there many years ago, and it's time that we turn around the behavior there. Thank you.
All right, in District Three, the person answering first this time will be Kim Short.
This is definitely a problem that is in all of our schools, I think, although I will say some principals seem to be a little bit better at it than others. There was, I think, some mixed messages that were given to our, our principals last year, very much so driven by the number of referrals per month. And we can't make decisions on what we do with children based on not hitting a number, basically, that's too high. We need to look at every single situation, and we need to enforce the policy. It's not about creating more policies, it's about actually enforcing them. And I would say this is something that we've seen as an issue in Volusia County Schools for quite some time, and whether it was the uniform policy or whatever it could have been, it's not about creating more policies, it's about enforcement. So from a School Board perspective, I don't think that we probably need to do anything except for making sure that people are, the district needs to make sure that they're enforcing it. If we see a problem with the policy, which I don't see a problem with the policy, that's where we would actually have to make a change.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
That's true, the policy is there, and we need to enforce it. I think we need to take a step forward and, and ensure that everybody from the superintendent all the way down through the boots-on-the-ground at the school know publicly that that, in fact, is what we're going to do. And I too have always heard the rumors about, you know, we can't, we don't want the data on the computer, it makes us look bad, et cetera, et cetera. And that's just not acceptable. And I do believe, if we get a handle on it, the data will come back into our favor. It's going to get worse before it gets better, but we've got to nail this down. So follow the existing policy is a great place to start. In addition to that, I think we need to look further down the line into our elementary school kids, and, and in some way, I don't know exactly how, but in some way, try to start fostering a, a, a culture of not bullying and, and empathizing with other kids and accepting other kids for who they are, and, and that kind of stuff. I know kids can be kids, but the adults in the room know that and know how to handle it. And I think if they get the support from the district level all the way down, including parents, I think we can get some change.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Short, you will answer the next question first. Do you have a special skill set that sets you apart from other candidates for this position? Please explain.
I think the thing that sets me apart from other candidates is that I have a lot of relationships within this district that are already built, that would allow me to hit the ground running, from parents that are, that are active within our school district to our, our deputy superintendent, to our superintendent who we've worked with. Because as the Volusia County Council PTA Treasurer, Business Partner Liaison, and Legislative Chair, and somebody who's attended ninety-five percent or more of our School Board meetings for the past ten years, I've, I've been able to do that. And that, and that really does benefit all of our students and all of our families, having somebody with that, with that ability. I also have a background in business where I've run a thirty-million-dollar business, and I had my license in demolition, not explosive, for two different counties. So I, I also understand facilities and big budgets. So those are all things about myself that I think set myself apart from other candidates.
Mr. Kennedy?
Well, I think it's safe to say, the four candidates sitting at this table could brag that we have relationships all throughout the district. Most of us have lived in the community long enough to know the folks that work there, the people that are neighbors, and, and throughout the system. I think what sets me apart is, one, I'm the only person that's actually served on the public dais before, and that's an experience if you haven't done it, is, is a place where you'll learn how to deal with constituents, accept problems, and, and listen oftentimes you're not agreed with, but you have to be able to work with people and listen to everybody's perspective. And as a council member in Edgewater, I learned that quite often, how to deal with people, and how municipal budgets work. I've owned a business in southeast Volusia for over twenty-five years. Prior to that, I know that the other candidates go back deep. I mean, when I graduated from, from college, well, actually, I never graduated, when I left college, I went to work for a group of John Deere dealerships in South Georgia that is now the largest John Deere dealership in the world at over a billion dollars in sales.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bowie, same question.
My credentials and my experience have been forged in the trenches and the fires. I've been an employee and teacher administrator for Volusia County Schools for more than forty years. Classroom teacher, high school coach, I've been building administrator for twelve years, principal for nine years at elementary, middle, and high school levels, district administrator for another twelve years. I know something about education, and I know, and I've also been trained in effective schools' education. I know the behaviors that teachers must model in order for learning to take place, the behaviors that principals must model in order to have a safe and effective school. I was Principal of the Year when I was in a middle school, and that's because I had a supportive staff. But discipline and the ambiance of a school actually starts with the principal. If there's a safe campus, if there's an effective campus, if schools, kids want to come to school, it starts with the principal. So if, if we want to start with, talk about what makes schools work, we must have effective principals and supportive school boards.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
So I too have spent thirty-six years of my life in Volusia County Schools' continuous service, and I am currently sitting on the School Board, and I sat through it probably in the most difficult time that any of us have ever lived through when it comes to education. I believe in our children. Every one of them is a gift, and every one of them deserves a great education. So what sets me apart is, I'm current. I currently know all of the individuals in every different department because of the wide variety of experience I bring. Everything from having taught at all three levels, to being a district administrator, writing grants, installing technology in schools, but also coordinating all the summer programs. So there isn't a department within Volusia County Schools that I haven't worked with, and I know the individuals, and when something comes up, I immediately know who to reach out to, to get parents' help. And that's what I do every day. I roll up my sleeves, and I'm out there in the schools assisting with wherever I'm needed. Thank you.
Jamie, you answer this question first. We're back to you. What is your position on banned books, and would you explain what that position is?
Absolutely. I'm an avid reader, although I'll be honest with you, I shared with someone in the audience, I haven't had much time to read lately. I said I'd like to go get on a cruise ship with a stack of books, and that would make me very happy. But the past four years have not allowed that to happen. I believe in children having access to books. Where we're at right now, though, unfortunately, in society is, we have some individuals that have taken some of our classic books, and they've actually taken them, and they've written them in a way that they're not age-appropriate for children. I thought, why would Anne Frank's Diary show up on a book list? Until I had a parent two weeks ago bring to me an Anne Frank's Diary that is a new version that is written, that is not appropriate for a child to read, because it contains pornography. So we are being attacked right now as a way to get to our children. So here's where I stand. I stand on books being read and shared.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
I think it's critically important that our children have access to books that give them a variety of topics to read and a variety of approaches. However, there needs to be some structure relative to what is appropriate, and that's where the parent group comes into play, that's when our curriculum staff comes into play in recommending certain textbooks to be used for our children. It's not a School Board decision by itself. We must have input from our parent groups and from our curriculum staff. And books that are inappropriate, the ones that are laced with profanity or pornography, I'll have an issue with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Short?
Yes, I, I agree with the other candidates. I mean, we, we can't let our children in elementary school watch a PG-rated Disney film without having some kind of parent permission slip, you know, sent home and, and signed. So why don't we just, I wish we had just had that simple with books. I, I would not have believed that we have some of the books that we've found in some of our schools until I've actually seen them. It, it is disturbing. I mean, there's graphic novels with, with sex acts in them that are, have been found in some of our elementary schools. I don't think any of us would say that that's something we want our children to be exposed to. I, I grew up, you know, my mother's a reading coach in this county, and my parents took us to go buy a book every single week after church on Sunday. I mean, I, I have no problem with children having access to books, but I do have a problem with them having access to books that we would not allow them to watch if it was a movie. So why, why don't we just have it that simple? Why can't we just start putting some, some labels on them? Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
I mean, I think we all agree that the books that, that are there in particular classrooms or at each elementary or middle or high school should be age-appropriate. That being said, I'm a firm believer in the more you read, the more you know. I'm a firm believer that parents know how to parent their kids. And, and I know that the district, as well as the state, has a book selection process. From time to time, something might slip through, and we should audit that from here and there. But by and large, with that policy in place, and parents also have the objection, the ability to object, hey, Mike, I don't want my kid to read that book, and they're offered a substitute. And that policy's been around for a long time. But what I do object to is certain groups coming in and choosing the books that other groups will read. So I might want my kid to read some of this, I'm not suggesting then what they describe, but what I'm, age-appropriate, but, but there are certain, there's literary value in a lot of these books. My, my family is, they're ardent readers. They read, 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 and they read everything. And our kids do live in the real world, so, you know, the, the books change. So the more you read, the more you know.
Mr. Kennedy, you actually answer this first, this question first. And by the way, this is question number six. Veteran Veteran teachers with over 15 years' experience are making about the same as a beginning teacher. How will you address salary compression? And would you be willing to initiate a compensation strategy going forward?
Yes, of course. And it is a problem. I think it's not fair. And it goes back to our teacher retention and recruitment issue. You know, you're there for 15 years and you're making the same as the new person. And that hurts, especially as you approach retirement and you're going to be without a job and living on a pension that's considerably less. So it's something that's top of mind to an older teacher. I would be willing to work with any resources we have to try to change that. Obviously, the state sets the budget. We do have some huge hurdles there. But I think, you know, it wouldn't be a bad thing to break our budget down, go back zero-based budget and start looking for ways, if not now, but when, and guide the budget to pay teachers more. Because if we're going to have this competition for teachers throughout the state and throughout the country and throughout the world, the only way, just like in businesses, you have to offer incentives to get not just teachers, but we want the best teachers. So teacher pay is definitely something that's important.
Thank you. Ms. Short?
Yes, this is a huge problem and there's a couple ideas. One, I think that we made a big mistake years ago when Flagler was smart enough to figure out a way to have a step system, which we know we can't have a technical step system, but what they have is a step system. It made them much more competitive. Whenever they have a job opening, all they have to do is pilfer right from Volusia County. And we've seen that time and time and time again. So it's ridiculous that we aren't trying to figure out a way to be like that. It's just, honestly, it's irresponsible of us. There's nothing more important to a child getting an education than who is standing in front of the room. And we have got to keep our qualified, quality teachers with experience inside our schools. And that's why that needs to be a focus. The other big idea that I've given them is that, you know, we have human capital audit companies out there where we can task them with finding money and the money to actually pay for them by looking at the district positions and finding ways to make cuts so that we can find the funding that we need so that we can go ahead and give our teachers some raises. Sorry, I could go on and on.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
If you look back at the history here in Volusia County, you will notice that we did have a step system so that experienced teachers actually made a little bit more in the step in addition to whatever salary raises were placed on the bottom end. We have to go back and look at what worked for us and also evaluate what is happening in other school districts around the state where they are retaining their teachers with experience and they're compensating them so teachers can feel that. We just need to adjust our structure so that we do make sure that we are making an effort and teachers know that we value them and we're making an effort to keep them in the pores. So we have to just evaluate our current salary structure and do what is necessary, make the changes that are necessary to address this issue. If teachers are concerned, then we need to address it. Not taking away from the beginning salaries from our beginning teachers because we do have to compete. But we do not want to make that a sacrificial option for experienced teachers.
Ms. Haynes?
So actually, when I started on the board, the teacher salary was at 39.2. We are now at 47.5. So yes, a compression issue happened. But that's because a separate pot of money was set aside specifically for teacher salaries. In that set aside, 80% had to go to the teachers that were below 47.5 to get them their classroom teachers. It didn't include all of our other teachers, such as a school counselor, a media specialist and ESC support facilitator. We made a commitment as a board to get to 47.5 and we got there quicker than other districts. Our commitment now is to start at the top and take the money because we follow the rules and now bring our more experienced teachers up to therefore do away with the compression issue. But in 2011, we lost steps, not because of our choice. And we are now dealing with that and the goal is to bring them up. On July 1, all of our support staff started out at $15 an hour. A year ago, some of them were at $9.78 an hour. We now have a compression issue there to deal with.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie? Question number seven. What have you done to participate in Volusia County Schools or public education in the past year?
What have I done to participate in public education? I volunteered in schools, specifically Stark Elementary, through a Rotary group. We went in there and we hosted a science, hands-on science option. I've also joined or attempted to participate in a school awards program where I went in and we were able to recognize some students for their literary gains in their reading program. And it's a literacy program that encourages students to read and also to perform. We offered them plaques, but more than that, they were actually given dollars, a hundred dollar check. So, and also, we offer a bowling for literacy program where we raise money to buy dictionaries for children in the various elementary schools.
Ms. Haynes?
The question would be, what have I not done? So I've served breakfast, I've served lunch, I've served supper at schools where they've been short-staffed or needed help. I have read to classes, Judge Spelling Bee's Science Fair, Social Studies Fairs. I have done evening events like the trunk or treat and handed out candy. I've attended volleyball games, football games. This is my life, this is what I do every day because I made a commitment to be there for our kids and our parents. And my own mother said to me, I thought, when you switched over and you took a $50,000 a year pay cut to do this position, that you were going to kind of start into a semi-retirement piece. She said, I think you're doing more now than what you even did before. So I try to take Sundays off a little, but my heart is with students. And so that's where I'm at. I meet with parents, I meet with community groups, I go to city council meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Short?
I'm a certified educational surrogate with Volusia County Schools. So when parents reach out to me and they need someone to attend IEP meetings with them so that I make sure that they understand what programs are, I help them there. I'm a substitute teacher. I've subbed in 14 of our area schools in the past year. Almost every single one of them in District Three. I'm a mentor. I've mentored this past year a student over at Newsmorden Beach Middle School. I've served on the ESC Advisory Committee. I've served on the Title I Family Engagement Committee. I've, I'm trying to think what else I've done. I've served some things too, like as Ms. Hayes has mentioned, wherever they basically need some kind of support. I'm a member of the Chamber Education Committee where we've put together some different events for that. I run a Volusia County School Forum Facebook page with over 12,000 people on it where I raised $5,000 so that we were able to give four $1,000 scholarships and two PTAs $500.
Mr. Kennedy?
I thought the question was for the last year, but I guess if we're going back through our whole resume, I'll just take that advantage. But in the last year, so I still have two, well, I have one left in high school now. Last year I had two. And as a high school parent, I know everybody understands, my daughter's in Caspian. So I helped build sets, I fundraised, I've done all the support there. She's also on the tennis team, so I've gone to, you know, just about every tennis match, whether it's ice cold or sweltering hot. My wife's a teacher. I can't tell you how many things I've built for her classroom, helped her move, do this, do that. You know, last minute on a Sunday helping with this. But going back deeper into my career, when I was on the city council, the city of Edgewater, I actually started a city of Edgewater Scholarship Program that employs donations on the city of Edgewater residents' water bills. And over the years, that's raised over $70,000 and created a wonderful event called the Princess Ball down in Edgewater. And that's a program that will continue to give for decades to come. Other than that, just reaching out with kids. I have five kids and so I'm always mentoring at some level children in the community.
All right, thank you. First question now is Ms. Short. We're going back to staying in District Three. How will you achieve equity for all students and represent all constituencies?
I don't think that's a hard thing to do. I think that you need to make sure that every single child gets a world-class education and that's at the forefront of every decision that you make. You don't look at children for what they, where they come from or what they look like. You make sure that every child has access. Not every child is getting everything the same. I mean, I know this very, very well because my mother's taught at Westside Elementary School for 15 years, a school where we see a lot of our students that come from poorer means. It is definitely different when you have a child like mine that went to Sweetwater Elementary School versus the children that are at a Westside. What families can provide for their children when they walk in the door, it is different. But as a school board member, our job is to always make sure that those kids get every single thing they need, every single one of them. And I know that I've been blessed in the fact that I've been able to be there for my children and I want to be able to continue to be the champion of all children in this school district, regardless of where they come from.
Mr. Kennedy?
So equality is a big word and encompasses a lot of things. And sure, some of us have more means than others and that shows and that's the United States of America. But I think for a child to thrive in a school, they have to feel welcome and they have to feel a part of it. So when it comes to equality, accepting children for who they are, what they believe, and creating a culture that no matter who you are, no matter your sexual preference, no matter you're a boy, girl, black, white, brown, whatever and whoever you, wherever you come from, we need to foster a culture of acceptance and love and make our schools a place where every kid actually wants to go every day. And if they're in that mindset and they feel good about it, they will be in a much better place to learn and succeed and come back to our community and be that much better community members.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
It is clear that our schools are serving children from various socioeconomic backgrounds. Therefore, we have to make sure that our resources in those schools, where parents are not able to send their children to school with a breakfast, having all of the amenities that school, children need in order to be successful, we have to make sure that we're providing the additional resources in those schools to make sure that that school is just as nurturing, just as supportive and providing the kind of overall resources that the children need, especially at the elementary level. Some schools just need more resources than others and our budget has to be one that will actually show that. Those students, where those children are in schools where they need additional support, even taking lunch home at the end of the day because they're not sure they're going to have dinner at home, are things that we have to address. And that's why our parent groups are so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
So part of my career experience is working with Title I and writing the Title I Part A grant. The funds that come in for Title I are for our students in our highest poverty schools. So I have the most experience of everyone running for this position and understanding how those funds can be used in order to support our students so that they have technology and resources and access to what they need. But also for the food piece. This year, I'm proud to say that we're moving to the Community Eligibility Program, CEP, short, so that we can provide breakfast, lunch and supper for all of our students free of cost again this year at all of our schools. Food's the number one thing children need in order to learn. During the pandemic, when we sent them home for spring break, I knew our children were going to go hungry. And I kind of argued a little with the superintendent and the COO, but we basically opened up 23 sites to serve meals out of and we ran 110 bus stops. And I worked on that daily to locate where we had children that needed food. I'm very good at knowing where resources need to be and how to spend the funding on it.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes, you answer first. Question number nine. Volusia County Schools is a B district. Is it fair to say Volusia County Schools will never be an A district if it continues to have permanent substitutes teaching math and reading classes? Explain your answer whichever way you go.
So I do believe Volusia County Schools can go back to being an A. We've been through a time that none of us were prepared for. The grading criteria changed during the pandemic piece, but we're also now moving into a new system. The FSA testing is going away and we're going to do a progress monitoring piece. We now have to figure that out and what does it look like for our students. But as far as the substitute piece goes, I have said this loud and clear, I've said it every time I get a chance on the board. We have to stop building our budget from the top down and build our budget from the classroom level up. So we are top-heavy, I'll be honest with you, at the district level. And we need to review and we need to put people back into positions. At the last board meeting, we had taken 29 ESC teachers out of the classroom to turn them into teachers on assignment. That's a shortage and a critical area. Why would we do that? My understanding is, we're going to be putting them back in the classrooms. Classrooms is the number one area. We need certified teachers in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
I've been saying all along that our school district can move from a B to an A. That's not an option. We must do that. And the way you do it is to make sure that our classrooms are fortified, make sure that the teachers have resources. First of all, make sure we have certified teachers in all of our classrooms. If we say we want to be an A school district, that's where it has to happen. Student performance, what teachers are, having certified teachers in those classrooms and make sure those teachers know that they are our highest priority. It's unacceptable to have, get a B in a school district. We have to evaluate exactly where that happened. And I do believe by making sure that we have certified teachers in all of our classrooms and supported, we can change that, turn that around. And then making sure that they have the kind of district support from our curriculum specialists to make sure that they are able to provide a comprehensive education for our children. That's where the rubber meets the road. Student performance, being able to provide the services that are needed.
Thank you.
Of course not. If we continue to have subs, we're not going to get there. Can we get there? Absolutely.
Justin, I'm sorry. Kim should be answering first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's my complicated system, trust me.
I'm sorry.
It's fine. Okay. Okay, so yes, we definitely have to find a way to keep our teachers. That's where the magic happens. We've got to have teachers in every single one of our classrooms. I definitely would agree with everybody here when it comes to that. Another thing that needs to happen is that we've been, I've been asking for about 10 years now for us to have some kind of a citizens' budget advisory committee formed so that we can get them involved and how it is that we're going to find the money in order to create more ways to put teachers inside of our classrooms that also help us make some cuts at the district level and get some of those people back into our classrooms. There's nothing more important than who's going to be in front of our kids. So, I mean, that's kind of obvious when it comes to learning gains. I also think that we need to have better relationships with our teachers union. I think that that lacked with our last superintendent because if we're not listening to our teachers and finding out exactly what they think is wrong and what they're being required to do so that we can take what's on their plate and make it just the important stuff, we've got to figure that part out.
Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, so yeah, we need to address the teacher shortage. So I'm hearing what Ms. Haynes is saying about the ESC teachers. But consider this. A lot of them have moved into a TOA position because they lacked the support while they were teaching in Special Ed. They had classrooms where the kids were very disruptive and due to the labor shortage and a perceived lack of support from the district, they left those positions because it was just too hard. Every day, it was a grind that they just couldn't take. And so they chose to move up and out of those positions. And to go to the TOAs now, and especially some of them who have made the investment in getting advanced degrees to try to move up the ladder because the pay on the bottom end is too low. And they've spent 20 years in the system and they've gone out and tried to get the credentials to move up. And to say to them, oh, too bad, we need you back in the ESC classroom, they're going to say goodbye. And that goes back to my triage portion of my retention plan is that we've got to get to the teachers before they quit. And I think that would be a dangerous thing to do.
All right. Mr. Kennedy, you answer first. Question number 10. How will you work to improve school board and community interaction? Please be specific.
So I think the word relationship was brought up earlier and I'm a firm believer in relationships. I've run my own business for 25, 26 years in the community. I know a lot of people and I try to treat everybody with respect. Customer service has always been my background. And I think that the school board is a similar title in that we are bringing in stakeholders from the community, listening to concerns, listening to ideas and talking to the teachers union and the administration. There's a lot of different stakeholders. They come from lots of different walks of life in the community. But just being that person that will listen, being accessible and having the knowledge, the life experience to understand what it is that they're issued. experience to understand what it is that their issue pertains to, I think makes me a good candidate. I've been through a lot of things. I've had my successes. I've had my failures. I've lived in Volusia County for 52 years. I know a lot of people and I have a lot of friends, and I just think that it makes me well positioned to be a good liaison to the community.
Ms. Short?
There was something that we did here in Volusia County years ago. It was called the Goodwill Tour, and it was where the school board members were accessible in all the different districts for people to come and meet, meet with them. I think that's something that we should be doing on a quarterly basis with our, with our community. I also, as part of a communication plan that I want to implement, I want to have something called Coffee with Kim, and I want to do those quarterly with my community, and I'll do that throughout the district. I've even met some candidates. One of my favorite things about running for office is actually door knocking. And anybody who knows me knows I have some really funny, great stories and some people that I've met. But I, I will tell you, I've met candidates who've said that, you know, once they got into office, they still went out and they did some door knocking, just so that they could, you know, talk to their voters again and touch base with them to see how they think that they're doing and see if they have any issues. I think there's things like that that need to happen, and, and as a school member, I think you need to have a plan like that in place.
Mr. Bowie?
As I've said before, when I was a principal, you know, connecting with parents was part of my priority. That was part of my platform of having a successful school. I would carry that same attitude to the school board. And as I've mentioned before, an advisory committee of parents and community stakeholders, you know, to the school board would be ideal. But if you really want to reach out to all of your community members, you would reach out to the Hispanic community if there's a, to form an advisory group there, African-American community, to form an advisory, to give them access to the school board members so that they can share their concerns. If we truly want to serve all of our parents and our entire community, then we have to make sure that we bring all the stakeholders, at least giving them opportunity to come to the table. That way, we hear all the concerns, whether we, how we respond to those concerns, maybe in programs we have in place, but at least we know what those different concerns are and can respond.
Ms. Haynes?
So we actually have an African-American advisory committee and a Latino advisory committee. I have served on those. But it is true, we have to go out into the community. And one of the things I have found the best way to get out into the community is you attend the events happening at schools. You go to those award ceremonies, and you talk to the parents prior to it starting. You stay after and talk to them, but you make yourself available to answer them through emails, take their telephone calls, and assist them. I mean, I go out and sit in on IEP meetings just so that they understand the language of what's being said, so that they can get the best services for their students. But it's all about being available. It's being present. It's being at the schools for when the events are going on. That's why my calendar's kind of packed, and staying there and taking the time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you very much to our candidates. There were a couple of questions we did not get to, and so I know the candidates will be more than happy to speak with you afterward about your specific question, if it was not asked today. We're going to have closing comments now, and we will do that in reverse order of the opening comments. So that means that in District One, we will have Mr. Bowie give his closing comment first, and then Ms. Haynes give hers. I will remind everyone that they have two minutes for their closing comment. So Mr. Bowie, your two minutes are here.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm running for school board District One, because I do believe that my experience and my training would be an asset on the school board to move our school district from a B to an A rating. And that's because I have 40 years of experience with Volusia County, and I've been into trenches along the way as a classroom teacher, high school coach, curriculum supervisor, where I had to work with elementary and middle school, uh, high school teachers, fellow principal, as I mentioned to you before. And I've been trained in effective schools education, which means I know the behaviors that must be exhibited to affect learning. And I do believe my experience relative to having to manage budgets at the school level, at the district level, my experience in connecting with parents and trying to build relationships, working relationships can be an asset to decision, policy decisions for our school board. If we have a visionary superintendent, and I do believe we do, we can move our school district forward. My platform includes, you know, seeking, first of all, making our schools safe, making sure that our students are feeling safe, as well as our, our staff, supporting our teachers, administrators, and support staff, and also building relationships with our parents and our business community, and seeking more funding for our school district. If we put these things together with individuals who are experienced in the trenches and know the direction and the things that we're, we really need to do to make sure our students are learning and our staff are, are providing and feeling safe and feel the freedom to do what they're trained to do according to school board policy, I think we can move our school district to an A rating. B is unacceptable. Thank you.
Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. So 36 years ago, I started my career at Enterprise Elementary. And as one of my other board members likes to say, I've taught everything at the elementary level except for fourth grade. I've also taught those wonderful courses everyone loves, and I hope all of you do too, such as pre-algebra, Algebra I and Algebra II, and geometry at the secondary level. But my heart is a classroom teacher, and that's why I visit our schools and stay focused on what's happening there so that I can hear them to make the changes that are needed at the school board level. But in addition to that, as I said, I was a district administrator over Title One. I've worked with all of our homeless, neglected, our unaccompanied youth programs, our parenting. I put the first technology out from Title One for our students that didn't have access to that. And I coordinated our 21-plus summer programs that bring our kids back in so that they don't slip during the summer. But what I did mostly is I built relationships. There are students now that I taught that are teaching in our schools, or they're working in one of our facilities in maintenance positions, or they could be an office specialist or a paraprofessional. And relationships are the most important piece. When I ran in 2018, I ran on one item, and we were going to get textbooks back in for teachers. Our teachers are not trained or qualified, nor do they have the time to write their own curriculum. I'm happy to say teachers have access to textbooks and resources now. That was accomplished. I also ran on being fiscally responsible. I chaired the internal audit committee. Thanks to the state legislation that came down on that, we've already found ways to save and where there's redundancy. I also sit on the Board of Directors, thankfully, for my colleagues voted for me to sit on the Florida School Board of Directors, and I'm a voice at the state level that represents Volusia County. What I promise to commit to continue to do is to provide for our teachers and staff first and foremost, the people on the front row, or the front ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
So I'm running for school board District Three. That's Port, South Port Orange, New Smyrna Beach, Edgewater, Oak Hill, Sam's School, and a little bit, a little bit of the land south towards the West Side District. I think that there's a lot of good candidates in this race this year, and I'm really happy to see that. It makes me happy to know, having a child in school, that regardless of who wins, that the school board members share a similar vision in what we do for our kids. But I think what the challenge is for voters is to choose out of these candidates, who's going to be the best person to represent our community and our families and all the stakeholders, taxpayers. Not all stakeholders have kids in schools. Not all families can attend every school function, mom's, dad's, work. It's a busy life. We all understand the drill. And that's why you see low turnout with volunteers and stuff, because young families have a lot of pressure on them. So for voters, they need to find somebody that can empathize with their position, that can represent the community better than the other candidates. And I feel like my experience going back to 2006 on the Edgewater Planning and Zoning Committee, where we faced lots of challenges, pre-economic bust, we had all kinds of issues that were controversial, but I did really well there, and I was able to forge some relationships and make consensus there. As a city council member, I was able to get several agenda items that, that I wanted done. And actually, wasn't as hard as I thought, because I reached out to people in the community, and, and it made sense. And so we were able to achieve things. As a business owner for 27 years, I've had my failures and I've had my successes. I can say for the last 15 or 20 years, I've done really well, and I finally figured it out. And that's through perseverance, and that's through reaching out for help and making friends in the community, et cetera. So I feel like my life experience on the board would be a real benefit. We need wide vision.
Thank you. Ms. Short?
I think what sets me apart is that I can do this as a full-time commitment, and this is my passion, and it's been my passion for 15 years. When my, my son started kindergarten, my oldest son started kindergarten, I went to my first PTA meeting, and I walked out the vice president. And I have poured my heart and soul into these schools for that long. 10 years ago, I, when the one mill failed, and the district was threatening to take away art and music from our elementary schools, I packed up my 10, seven, and five-year-old little boys, and I took them to my very first school board meeting. And I got up and I used my three minutes to tell the superintendent and the school board, listen, my name's Kim Short, and I'm here, and I want to help. Please let me know what I can do, because I don't want to see this end for our children. And that commitment, that process of showing up and being a champion for the children in this county has never ended. I am so dedicated to the children in this county. I've been the chair of the half-cent committee. I've worked on every committee known to man, from the superintendent selection committee to the teacher of the year committee. And every time I'm sitting in that boardroom and a group of parents walk in because a coach got fired, or because an elementary school was going to get closed, and they're upset about it, I go and help them advocate for that, for their children. That's what I do. When, when it was COVID happening and all of our children got sent home in March of 2020, I ran a Facebook page where I was putting 40 hours a week in, answering 400 to 500 posts on parents who needed help. And I grew that page from 5,000 people to over 12,000 people. This is my life, this is my dedicated vision, life, everything, and that's what sets me apart from the other candidates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give a huge round of applause to our candidates. And also to those of you who come today, thank you very, very much. I just want you to think really hard, and just remember that voting is a right. It is your right, but more importantly, it's your responsibility. Not voting just is not an option. And I, the league feels so strongly that you voting is great, and you have to do it, but you also have to walk outside your house and go to your neighbors and tell your family. Your vote counts. One vote has made a major difference over here in Deltona, because if one more person had come out to vote, they wouldn't have had to have flipped a coin to see who served on the city commission. So voting is important, and we've got people out there who don't feel that their vote counts. You all have to be the standard bearers. You're here today, and you're here for a reason. And that reason is you wanted to get educated, because you know your vote counts. You've got to pass that on to everyone you talk with. I have a couple of announcements. One is, there is a community event that's going on here in the Deltona Center. They're giving away all sorts of things, and we have been invited for anyone who would like to go and participate or take part in what is going on over there. I also want to alert you to a website that is called votefor11.org. This is a website put out by the League of Women Voters. We send every candidate, local candidate who's running for in a race, a set of questions. Everybody, depending on the race, got the same questions. And if you go to votefor11.org and put in your address, it will pull up your primary ballot, and it will have every one of the candidates listed. Now, if the candidate chose not to answer, it will have a note that says, there's something, I think it's, there is no response yet. But for those who did, you can actually put, I'll just use the two or here, the four, you can put them side by side, read the question, and read the answer, so that you actually can compare two candidates at one time. So the website is votefor, the numbers, four, one, one, dot org. And I encourage each of you before you vote to go check that website and read what it says. Another reminder that I'm sure you all know, but the primary is Tuesday, August 23rd, and early voting begins a week from today and runs through Saturday, August 20th. So that gives you plenty of time to vote. I have one last announcement, and that is that Ruben Cologne was going to be here today. He would not have been able to participate in the forum because his opponent was not coming, but at the last minute, he was required to go back to work due to colleagues of his who have COVID. And so we did want to make that announcement because he was going to be here today. If there are no questions, I'm sure the candidates, if you have further questions, they would be more than happy to respond. And each of you have a wonderful afternoon, even some morning. And thank you very much on behalf of the League of Women Voters.